The October 25, 2016 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience please turn off your electronic device or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System, the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding irregular agenda items or matters in which the school board customarily take action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. This form must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District Two.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District Four.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Mr. George Salmon, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. James Jackson, Community Liaison with the Social Work Service, will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent and Board Members. I have my sons here again as usual. This is becoming kind of an annual treat where I have my oldest Carter Jackson, my middle son Campbell Jackson, and my youngest Collier Jackson here. They're all wearing red to support the Red Ribbon Week that's going on throughout the county. Typically, what I do is I give a little breakdown of what Red Ribbon, how it came about, and what we are doing as a county, the district, to support Red Ribbon and its efforts throughout the, that goes throughout the United States. In 1985, a drug enforcement agent by the name of Enrique Camarino was working in the county, or excuse me, the country of Mexico, and he was on the major verge of a drug bust for cocaine and marijuana. Unfortunately, the drug cartel at the time became aware of his actions and they, unfortunately, they kidnapped him and eventually they executed him. He came from a small town called Colexico, California, and there was many people from that town who wanted to honor him and pay homage to him for his death and for what he stood for with the Drug Enforcement Agency. Throughout the town, different high schools were starting to form clubs where they would wear red ribbons at different times of the year to show honor and support to this drug enforcement agent. As the years progressed, the Red Ribbon grew in size and eventually became a national event. This year, we have the National Red Ribbon. The Marion County Public Schools has twenty-three schools that are participating in this school spirit contest. With that in mind, the schools will hold assemblies, they'll have guest speakers that come in, they decorate their campuses with red ribbons and decorate their doors and do different things, have silly skits. But there is a serious note behind all of that, and that is to bring substance abuse awareness, misuse in our county. Judges from outside agencies and from support staff here in the Marion County Public Schools will be on their campuses at some point in time on Friday to judge them on a point system. Three of the schools who, excuse me, there's three categories that the schools are vying for. There's an elementary, a middle, and a high school category. Whoever is the number-one elementary, number-one middle, and number-one high school will be presented a trophy, and they will also receive a $500 award from CASA, which is the Community Council Against Substance Abuse. Later on in November, I'm hoping to bring the award winners and present them with their checks with Dr. Jordan, who's a pivotal part to this. So, thank you very much for allowing us to come in, talk a little bit about Red Ribbon. And if you don't mind, if we could all please stand and we'll recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I want to say thank you very much for allowing us to come in and talk about Red Ribbon. Does anybody have any questions? Is there anything I can help you with?
I just have a comment. I want to thank you for supporting Red Ribbon and for keeping it going. I see the Red Ribbon stuff in all the schools. I went to a couple of elementary schools this morning, and the kids are very aware of what's going on, and to bring that to our students, especially our elementary, because they're the future going into middle and high, but I appreciate all the education and the support that you're giving our school system. Thank you, and thanks, boys, for coming.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ely. I appreciate it.
Ms. King.
I would also like to say thank you for providing this program and make sure that it is going. Today, I was also at a school out at Reddick, and Ms. Dickey had on a cute little dress, knee-high socks and sandals, but they're, and the other students had socks on also, but it was they're socking it to drugs. And, you know, that'll stick with those students, but it was just fun to see a principal, an elementary principal, in her socks, and as the students walked by, she's looking at them saying, "Did you remember to read last night?" It was great.
It is a great thing, and I love the way the schools have so many different ideas and how they present their Red Ribbon spirit throughout the week. It's going to be interesting to see what the judges have to say come Friday, so.
It'll be hard.
Mr. Superintendent. James, would you tell the board and the viewing audience a little bit about last night's grand opening celebration we had at the Ocala Police Department?
Yes, sir.
Share a little bit with the board about that.
The Red Ribbon kickoff is held annually, usually on a Monday evening. Last night was the annual kickoff. It's where community agencies come together, and we put on an event. It's free for the public. We provided food, entertainment. We had sponsors coming in and doing productions such as karate. We had an actual zip line there where kids were zipping across the parking lot, some kind of surfing simulator device. I didn't actually get to ride it, thankfully. But we have typically anywhere from five to seven-hundred people who show at that event. And again, it's all again to kick off the events that are held throughout the county with Red Ribbon. And we have a lot of great team members throughout the community agencies that help provide support to that, and the Ocala Police Department as well.
How many years have you all have had that kickoff at the Ocala Police Department?
I can say that I'm aware of, and I'm probably wrong, but I can say at least for the last eight years, I know we've had it. And I probably am wrong with that because unfortunately Kathy Trammell was pretty much the go-to person on Red Ribbon prior to her retiring and her handing the baton off to me, so. But I would say at least eight years, or possibly more than that, and I do apologize for not having that number.
Well, don't feel bad about it because I've made all of them except the one last night. I just wanted to know how many.
I really wanted to see on the zip line.
That would have been interesting.
I tried to talk to Mr. Vianella into going, but he didn't want anything with that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. You all have a wonderful day.
Give them a round of applause, y'all. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman and Board, with the exception of item 24.2, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 25, 2016, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely and seconded by Ms. Boynton. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 22, 2016 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Ely, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Saying none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 27, 2016, school board meeting? May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
So moved by Ms. Ely, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Saying none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passed, five zero. I will now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. James. In compliance with Florida Sunshine Law, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers in tonight's meeting, either regarding one of the agenda items or a matter relating to school district operations. These procedures ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available on the table. Public speaker forms are also located on the table. Completed forms were due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 P.M. Chairman James will call tonight's speakers prior to the business portion of the meeting in the order of receipt by the school board's assistant. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to finish up. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Verbal attacks, slanderous statements, and profanity, of course, are strictly prohibited. Also prohibited are unsolicited commercial solicitations. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, they'll be scheduled after the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board at that time. Keep in mind for future meetings that speakers may use handouts or A.V. presentations, but only if they're provided to the board assistant at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. They must also have a total length of five minutes or less. Only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. That means identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. That concludes my remarks. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Brenda, do we have anyone?
There are no speakers this evening.
No speakers this afternoon. We'll move right along. May I have a motion to adopt the revised 2016-2017 Student Progression Plan? Mr. Superintendent.
Need a motion and a second, please.
May I have a motion?
So move.
And a motion by Ms. Ely, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. The Student Progression Plan reflects the changes in legislation in order to be in compliance with Florida Statute 1008.25 and to clarify language concerning student progression in Marion County. There is a statement on the original attachment that is incorrect and should be removed. It's on page eighty-nine, and a revised plan has been attached electronically. Board, you will remember that we did have a discussion about this at a recent work session. Mrs. Dudley gave us a presentation. I call your attention to two documents that are stapled in front of you right now. If you look on the first one that says "original," that's the original attachment. Number three has been stricken completely. There was reference to being valedictorian or salutatorian. One must also qualify for Florida Bright Futures, and there are some situations in which a student, because of the complexity of qualifying for that, may not actually be qualified for that. So that is simply taken out of the document that you have seen before. So the document attached to the board agenda tonight simply has number three omitted.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Student Progression Plan? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C. 15.1, which had been placed on the regular agenda for discussion? May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
James, Mr. James, have you not heard?
May I vote for you, Mr. James?
Vote for me.
Okay. Why isn't it letting me do it?
Well, it's in the back, tell me. Let me see what happened.
Okay. Locking eyes.
It's all right, guys.
It's renewed.
We can move on.
Okay. Now we have it.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to remove from the table the motion submitted at the September 27, 2016, school board meeting? Approval of the K-12 Uniform Assessment Calendar for the school years sixteen and seventeen to be in compliance with the Florida Statute and the State Board of Education Rules? May I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
It was moved by Ms. King, seconded by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The motion passed, five zero. This motion is now on the floor, is to approve the K-12 Uniform Assessment Calendar for the school years sixteen and seventeen to be in compliance with the Florida Statute and the State Board of Education Rule. Do we have any discussion? Per consensus?
Just for the, just for the public's interest, this was an item that we took off because there was a little misunderstanding about the minutes of time spent in testing in the district. And so this was why it was originally withdrawn and tabled, and we did great discussion at the workshop, and our staff came in and gave us great input, for which we appreciate, because there were some misunderstandings on all sides of it, and so we came to a, we came to our conclusion after a lot of discussion so that the public just doesn't see us stamping, stamping, stamping everything. A lot of talk went into this to make sure that we could get our testing minutes down to the minimum possible. And so, thank you, Mr. James. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else? Per consensus, given at the October 20, 2016 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, may I have a motion to amend by replacing, replacing the calendar, placing the calendar on the floor with options which has been attached to this board packet? May I have a motion and a second?
A motion.
Ms. Boynton? A motion and a second by Ms. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. I will now call for the vote on the original motion as amended. May I have a motion and a second? A motion is by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Ms. Boynton, listen, I'm behind.
That's fine. Yes, Mrs. Boynton made the motion. Mrs. Ely made the second.
Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve four contracts of employment for instructional and supervisory personnel? May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
So moved by Ms. Ely, seconded by Mrs. Boynton. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Yes, I'm trying to pull it up to talk about it. Okay. I removed this item because I wanted to have a little discussion about the, there were four contracts of employment, instructional all the way to supervisory. And the part of the contract that I pulled of the four was the contract of employment for supervisors and principals. I wanted to amend the contract. The reason I wanted to amend, very slightly amend it, and I did speak with legal department about the way I wanted to amend it. Our administrative employees are year-to-year, but the statute does provide for a three-year contract with an annual review. And so, there could be a situation where with an administration change or with lots of different things to where they really would not, and then I ask, okay, what are the reasons that you can turn someone down, you know, on their contract? And there was a section of the statute that also talked about good cause and lots of reasons, you know, really, you had, you could get sued. So, we are probably already doing this anyway, year-to-year, but I want to make sure that we weren't doing any three-year renewals and coming back and doing a, just a review at the end of the year because stat, state statute allows for that. So, I would like to amend the contract to say, to add a section that this agreement, it says in here, "This agreement shall begin on such-and-such date," and then it goes on. I want to add and terminate at the end of the business date on such-and-such date, which would be the end of the year, so that it keeps every contract year-to-year. So we have no three-year contracts that are just coming up for renewals that make it really hard to make changes if we need to make a change. So, and then I'd like to also add in paragraph eight, again, just term, again, put that termination date, insert from paragraph one, the termination date, the same date that we use, just to make our contracts real clean so that it's understood that every employee, which, like I said, this is the way I understand it's happening anyway, and it probably is, because we're told that administrators are year-to-year, and that's what you understand too, right, Ms. Ely? That they're year-to-year. But just so that nothing happens that the school board doesn't know about and that someone's given a three-year renewable contract, which is allowed by, like I said, by state statute, then this just clarifies our annual contract, right? Mr. Lake, is there anything I have not said correctly?
There's nothing legally that would affect amending the templates as you've discussed.
Just to have us a termination date on every contract, so there's no misunderstandings, and it just cleans it up and makes it a year-to-year contract. So that's my motion. I would like to amend the, and I have it here, Ms. Flotketter. The only thing that I'm adding is a termination date on the business date of blank, at the end of the year. That's all I'm adding. And then I'm adding a termination date in paragraph eight.
Mr. Superintendent, you had something?
I think I understand, but I'm not sure of the necessity for it. Our legislature has already, or very recently, determined that instructional personnel cannot have a contract more than, they would no longer have tenure, whatever it might be called these days. And there is some movement in some districts right now to negotiate the opportunity if a teacher has, or an instructional person has a certain kind of evaluation, a high evaluation, they can have expectation of employment, which flies in the face of the legislative intent. So I don't know anywhere or any time in Marion County's history in which an administrator, a supervisor, or a principal has been given more than a one-year contract. It may have happened, I don't know.
And this just makes sure it doesn't happen. I'm just adding a termination date on our contract, that's all.
Well, I think from a contractual point of view, more specificity is better, and the more removal of any ambiguity or any kind of interpretation issue is good, both sides know what they're getting into, and there's no doubt about what the agreement calls for.
I'm not disagreeing with anything. I just know the board, we'd worked through this. Mrs. Oliver spent a great deal of time working with Mr. Lake on this. I wonder if it would be, I'm going to propose something here. Ms. Stacy, I'm not sure whether this would be something you'd agree with or not, but perhaps you could take this supervisor and principal contract out of tonight's agenda, as in the amendment, and then possibly rework this and have some healthy discussion about this at a board work session, as to whether this terminology needs to be added or if the board wants to be, is to be added. Because I don't think, I don't know if any of the board members even know this was going to be proposed, and I, or whether you have an opinion on it. I don't know.
I mean, we can do that if we want to take up board time discussing it, but all I've added is a termination date. I mean, it seems real clean. Because we have a beginning date, this agreement shall begin on blank, but then we don't have a termination date. All I added was, "And terminate at the end of the business date on blank." That's all I've added.
I'm going to ask Ms. Oliver if she can help, or Mr. Lake, is there a reference to a year or annual in the contract?
No.
Is there a reference to the end of the fiscal year, June 30th? I did not know what the question was, so I did not do any additional research on this tonight.
Ms. Oliver, would you come up for just a minute?
I mean, we can, I can ask to table it, but I'm just adding, adding a termination date to the contract. I mean, contracts should have, be nice and clean and have a beginning and an ending date. Are you speaking about number one there in the contract? Right. Would you like to have my copy that I've got? I'll give that to you. You can see where, oh, I've added a termination date, that's it.
The contract does speak specifically to the number of days.
It does.
It already, so therein lies the finite end to the contract at any rate. Correct?
Right. Correct. It's not, all I'm asking is for a termination date. And...
The school board agrees to employ...
In other words, a termination date that corresponds with the number of days?
Mm-hmm. Just double, double? Because the reason I say this is because in statute, we really are allowed on some of these administrative contracts to do a three-year with a renewable, a renewal every year, instead of a new contract. And this just takes that away and makes sure that we don't have to do a renewal, that we do a new contract.
And even though it truly does say 261 days or 262 days or 260 days?
Right. Just add a termination date. So everything's clear.
I'd like to, I'd like to know a little bit more about this. I think the board would, I don't, maybe not. You decide.
Okay. Do you have anything else on that?
No, just that I do, I am not aware of anyone having longer than a one-year contract, just to clear that up. It may have happened in our past. I do not know that. But I do know we do, what you said is correct. We do generate these every single year. We issue these, and...
This would assure that this never happens. This would have a termination date to the contract so that there would not be a possible renewal out there lurking, that a superintendent in the future could look at the state statute and go, "Oh, I can give this person, you know, a three-year contract," and they would just have a renewal. It makes it difficult for us to say no. Because if they're, say they're, um, everything's good about their performance and everything, that would force the district to then say something, you know, some reason for why we don't want it, which would be then in their permanent record. If they wanted to get a job somewhere else, there's this negative, little negative, that's not necessary. This just makes it clear, because I'm... State statute does allow us not to do this. And I want to make sure our board is doing this. And it is a superintendent's decision, you know, when, when they're doing the contracts and it just got passed one of us or something, and this just makes sure it can't happen. And I'm happy that it hasn't happened in the past that we know of, but that it doesn't happen in the future. A simple termination date to a contract just closes it.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Oliver.
Shall I keep this, or do you want it back?
You can give it back. Board, what I'm hearing more than anything else is, is that I know Mr. Lake had an opportunity to review this. By the same token, we did not have an opportunity to review it other than tonight. What I've also asked is that, there's a motion to add this, but the superintendent is suggesting that we table it so we would have some, uh, so the board would have some additional time to discuss this.
I'll make a motion that we table, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Can I change my, can I remove my motion?
Yes.
Well, it wasn't seconded, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I removed my motion, and I'd like to make a motion that we table this. And have some discussion about this. The problem is, I thought we were in a hurry because these contracts are like for now.
We'd like to get our contracts out as soon as possible. However, you have that right as a board not to approve of this.
Does any, do, are there, I don't know if the other board members need to ta, I just don't want to cause a problem for Ms. Oliver with post, it's not a problem, to table it?
Either way, I'm, I'm good to move forward with, however, for the Mr., um...
Can we have a brief discussion at a workshop, the soonest workshop?
But if we table it, then we'll be able to do that.
Okay, let's do that. I make a motion, we table it and discuss it.
Okay, now, are we just tabling the annual contract employment for instructional?
Only, no, all the, only the supervisor one. The rest of them I'm fine with.
What we would, what we'd probably need to do is...
Can I remove that from it?
This is the, this last one is the one that, that Ms. Stacy, my, my suggestion would be is that you, uh, you amend the motion that's on the floor to remove the fourth contract, which is the contract for employment, and then ask for a second on that. And then if you get that second, then the board can vote to remove that, then we can go back and vote on the other three, and we'll make sure that that fourth one is on an upcoming agenda item.
Okay, you got that, Brenda?
A man to remove contract of employment for supervisors and principals.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stacy's made the motion?
Made the motion.
Do I get a second, where do I get the second?
Second.
It was second by Ms. King. Okay.
Discussion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
I need to vote on the motion as amended.
I have Mrs. Stacy and Mrs. Ely still needing to vote.
I don't, it didn't come up on my screen.
How do we get, I'm assuming you would want me to vote yea for you?
Okay, maybe because we've got the contract up, maybe? Maybe if we take the contract away? Okay, clip it away. Then we can see it. Okay, now we can vote.
Okay, the motion passed, uh, five zero. Now we'll go back to the original motion as amended.
Which includes the three contracts?
Yeah.
And the omission of the fourth.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Are you...
I'm getting there, I'm sorry.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Board, Mr. Chairman, we'll go ahead and make sure this is on the next, uh, work session agenda for discussion, and as soon as possible, put it on the agenda for voting. Thank you very much.
At this time, I would like to recognize Superintendent Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. Uh, board, as we've already discussed this, I requested the chair to declare a good cause to discuss an emergency item regarding hurricane makeup days for the 2016-17 instructional calendar.
I declare a good cause.
Board, the revised calendar is being requested as an emergency item due to parents and public needing to be aware of the changes to the calendar as soon as possible. I recommend a motion be made to approve the revised 2016-17 calendar that was previously board-approved on January 26, 2016. The changes are as follows. Friday, April 14, 2017, to be a regular school day. Friday, May 26, 2017, to be a regular school day. Tuesday, May 30, 2017, to be a teacher work day number four, no school. And then, just prior to that, Wednesday, May 24 through Friday, May 26, semester exams.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Ely. Second by Mrs., uh, Ms. Boynton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, uh, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the donation as submitted? $1,000 to Bellevue Middle School from the Rotary Club of Bellevue, Florida. $1,000 to Bellevue Middle School from the O'Callaghan, uh, from the O'Callaghan Marion County Association of Relatives. $2,500 to Forest High School from the Marion Culture, Marion Cultural Alliance, Inc., from the Mini Grant Little Shop of Horus. $2,310 to Fort McCoy School from the Fort McCoy School PTO. A 1985 Chevrolet truck valued at $6,800 to Marion Technical Institute from Joanne Hamerlich. $2,070 to North Marion High School from One Blood, Inc. $1,000 to Stan Wesdell Elementary School from Kathy and Martha Miller. $1,700 to Vanguard High School from the O'Callaghan Marion County Association of Relatives. May I have a motion and a second on this?
I just want to make a correction, Stan Wesdell was Gary and Martha Miller.
I'm sorry, Gary and Martha Miller, okay. May I have a motion?
So moved, second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. King, thank you.
On behalf of the Marion County School Board, we would like to just thank everyone for always being generous with your donations, whether it be monetary, or even items such as vehicles and stuff like that, and supporting our students and our staff members, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ely, did you get the numbers?
Court, $17,750.
Thank you. Okay. Just some board reminders. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, November 3, 2016, and at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to review the corrective action process for charter schools and update the three salary schedules for, for our federal department, from the Pedal, Department of Labor, of labor requirements. Board, I will go to the board for comment. And I'll start with Ms. Ely.
Okay, um, I just wanted to conclude this, um, anti-bullying month. Um, I noticed that Disney has a Choose Kindness campaign going on, as well as Marion County Schools. It's cool to be kind, and we've been giving out these bracelets. I would like to give out two bracelets tonight to a couple of people up here who've been kind to us all the time, and we're supposed to give them out. Um, Mr. James, you've been kind to us, really, you have, you've been very supportive. Can you get that on? I appreciate everything you, I appreciate everything you've done for us. You're a cool guy, it's cool to be kind. I hope you have to put your chair up. And Mr. Tomlin, you've been good to us no matter what, in good, bad weather, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ely.
Now, now, go give us a round of applause, guys. Okay, Ms. Boynton. Ms. King.
Yes, I would like to remind everyone that attendance counts, and I know this is starting to begin the time of year where it may be a little difficult to make it to class. So I just want to remind everyone and parents how important it is to be there. Um, also, I've been looking at our attendance numbers that we get through, and something caught my eye, and it was the catapult attendance numbers. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at them. I've looked at them for the past five days. And as an average for the past five days, we're looking at less than 50% of the students are there. Um, even as recently as yesterday, only 35% of our students, or the catapult students, were at school. So I would like to request a workshop in the near future that we can, um, look at these programs. Um, I would like to know how much it is costing our taxpayers for this program, and I would also like to know how much it is costing per student to, um, keep these programs. And with that, I'll leave it with that.
Okay, Ms. Superintendent, will you look?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll page catch on that, yes.
Okay, Ms. Stacy.
Okay, um, I've done some research. I challenged the $100,000 expenditure on the videos, um, at the last board meeting. And did not approve purchasing the videos, the $100,000 YouTube videos, whatever they are, um, that I think are like $90 a piece if a teacher uses one. And I had some confusion as to why we needed $100,000 worth, why we couldn't just get $50,000 worth. And so, Mrs. Dudley shared with me that, um, that, and I said, "Well, we, we didn't evaluate the $75,000 that we spent on videos last year. You have no way of, we don't even know if anyone wants these videos back." And we didn't, there's no evaluation at all. And I said, "So why are we getting stepped it up from 75 to 100?" And she shared with me that, um, she's doing it because the principals and teachers requested them. So I asked her for the names of the teachers and principals that requested them. And so, I sent her an email, and she shared, you know, that night at the meeting, will you give me the names of the teachers and the principals? So, I sent an email to her, still requesting that, and made a couple of phone calls requesting those names. And on Friday, received a call from Ms. Hart, sharing with me that no individual teachers or principals requested these. But that they, they went by the surveys. Well, the surveys were done in 2015. So I said to Mrs. Hart, I said, "Well, then send me the surveys, let me see what the teachers had to say." But that was before they were ever even purchased. That was a whole year ago, the surveys. We haven't surveyed at all since we got that. And in looking at the surveys, um, I went through the couple hundred pages of surveys that we had. And what I found was really interesting, that, um, actually, the majority of the, um, teachers prefer a face-to-face type staff development. And, um, I didn't see anywhere where anyone asked for classes that they could take. They, they mentioned, some mentioned taking some through the Moodle, doing some staff development through the Moodle. And on page 34 of 247, I did see, it says, "Please indicate your preferred method of professional development," was on the survey. And the majority of the teachers were at, face-to-face. Actually, what really surprised me about the surveys, and I'm really glad I requested them, was that 43% of the teachers asked for face-to-face staff development after hours. 13% said they would come in on weekends. And 59% said during the school day. So, um, a lot of this early dismissal day to get staff development, and a lot of that stuff, possibly if we did give the teachers a stipend, they would come in after hours, because it's clear on here that, um, that if you take the after-hours plus the weekend ones, you're like at half of them, that would do it after hours. So I found that really, really interesting. So, um, you know, my concern is still, and I also, at the very first of that survey, because I can't figure out where they got the fact that they needed Youtubes and videos, because nowhere in the survey does it ever get mentioned in the 247 pages. But, um, there were 1,300 teachers that responded to the survey. And of them, in technology, of the technology, about 74% said they don't need any training. 26% said they appreciate training. In writing, it was 87% of the teachers wanted their training.
Technology, I'm sorry, technology training, or just training in general?
I think it's the technology teachers.
Okay.
And then the, um, argumentative writing, 80% said, "No, we got it, we're fine." And grammar, 78%. So the point is that a lot of our teachers, maybe we're giving them training that they really don't even need, because they're saying 70, anywhere from 70% to 87%, we're saying, "We got this, we really don't need it." Where they said they wanted training was when it talked about strategies, FSA strategies, and FSA, um, you know, the standards and that sort of thing. And that was where the training was appreciate, more appreciated. But just the basic teachers on this, their, just what they teach, their writing, their grammar instruction, that sort of thing, they really, the major, huge majority of them, didn't, didn't need it, didn't want it, and, and everything. So, I found the surveys really interesting, and, Ms. Kelly, I should probably forward them to you, and I can forward them to all the board members if they'd like to see the survey, because it's 247 pages, and I've gone through every single one. And, but the fact is that, uh, no, no one requested. No, no warm body specifically requested. When I was told, principals and teachers, I was told, they have no names for me, so thank you.
Okay, Ms. Stacy, would you send that to all of us? Okay, and so we can evaluate that. Mr. Lake?
I look forward to attending a 90-minute audio conference on transgender issues this Thursday. So, that should be interesting, bring us up to speed on both the legal issues and the other more practical issues that schools are facing. So I will provide a summary of that to the board at one of our next meetings.
Mr. Superintendent?
I don't have anything.
Okay. We will look for that information that you will send to us. And, uh, just, uh, some general things I did, I meet with the Florida, at the Florida High Schools Association yesterday. And it was a very interesting meeting. There could be some changes coming down in terms of, of schools and attendance on, and how kids can be eligible to participate in, in extracurricular activities almost immediately, so they don't have to wait, have a waiting period or anything like that. That was some, one of the significant things. I did have an opportunity this morning to be, uh, over with the, uh, the Education Foundation, and they're beginning their projects, they're looking for people that want to participate in some of their, their programs. This is, uh, a dodgeball. And, Mr. Superintendent, maybe you can tell me about the dodgeball thing? Because I know I'm too old to be dodging balls.
Mr. Chairman, they, they need line judges and things like that. This is the, the foundation board actually has challenged themselves to raise funds in addition to go out and soliciting things. And last year, the board divided into four different, um, groups, I believe it was, and raised about $25,000. And this year, they've taken on two different projects, a, a massive tennis tournament of some sort, and a dodgeball tournament. I attended the dodgeball tournament last year and sat way up high in the bleachers, so far away from it as I could possibly get. But it's a fun time.
Okay. And the tennis and all of that for you guys, if y'all are interested in that, they are really, and let me just say this. They are really doing some neat things with our Education Foundation. If you had a chance to look at that article this morning in the paper, it attests to the fact that they are really on the ball. Okay, that's all I have in terms of comments. Okay. Before addressing the expulsion matter, I wish to acknowledge that the board, that board members have received the alternative placement list for a student through the October 17, 2016. Ms. Flockhatter, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, sir.
There none. May I have a motion to, uh, to approve the expulsion of J.D. 17-09 with Educational Services through the 2016-2017 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
Second by Ms. King. Second by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
So moved by Mrs. Zeeley.
Second.
Second by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Meeting is adjourned.